Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 1st. Persistent to Minnesota Statute 13D .02, the public body has determined that the Isani City Council Meeting will not be able to be held in person due to the pandemic COVID-19 persistent to Minnesota Statute 13D .021. The Isani City Council Meeting will be holding the City Council Meeting via telephone by using Zoom. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for Pledge Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice. Doing roll call, I have all council members present. I believe Councilman Collison is on via Zoom, is that correct? Councilman Collison, you there?
I'm here.
There we are. All right. Everybody's present. Any public comment at this time? I would ask that you unmute yourself by pressing star six and state your name and address No public comment at this time? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five zero. Approval of the City Council minutes for November 17th, which was a regular meeting of the City Council. November 17th was also a committee of a whole as well as our canvas board meeting. October 20th was our planning commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. Announcements, Committee of a Whole will be Tuesday, December 15th at 5:00 PM. City Council Meeting will be Tuesday, December 15th at 7:00 PM with a planning commission meeting immediately following that council meeting. Any council committee reports?
You're the only one that was an old size.
Oh, that's right. I was the one at the fire meeting. Ah, the only thing I can really say is, um, the fire district, Ms. Wood was also there. But the fire district and the city are going through final stages of them purchasing their building. And Ms. Wood is graciously helping out tremendously and that's why we so much love her. Any other council committee reports? All ready then. Let's move on to business items. K1, resolution, adopting the 2021 financial budget. Mr. Becker?
Thank you, Mayor. Give Josie a second. All right. So tonight, we're here to present and discuss the final budget for 2021 and set a levy for 2021. You know, what we'll do is, if it's all right, what I'll do is I'll go through the PowerPoint presentation, I'll make some comments, we'll get to the end and we'll make sure that we've got an opportunity for anybody on the call or in the audience here to ask any questions or make any comments. So first, we've added this this year. Just a little summary on property tax statement. Now, this is not the copy of the statement that everybody's just recently gotten, right? That's a proposed one. This would be your final one, this would be what you would get in March. The top portion is very similar to the proposed statement that everybody just received, but the bottom half of the screen shows a lot more detail. And just to kind of run through some of the basic points there, up on the top left or top right corner on this particular statement, you see the estimated market value, just for everybody's understanding, the estimated market value that the assessor sets is determined by state statute to the extent that they are required to hit by statute between 90 and 105% of your value. So that's what they're shooting for. The idea being is that they need to be able to get close to, sorry, the idea being that they need to get very close to the number that you would get if you sold your house on the market today. Then we see the taxable market value below that. Taxable market value is just simply your estimated market value less any exclusions. And pretty much any homeowner in town is going to have a homestead market exclusion that can be up to $37,000. In this, on this statement here, the proposed tax from last year for this parcel was a little over $2,700. And the final tax actually ended up being 2628. So proposed statements are not the final word on what the taxes will actually be. Then what I did was I just kind of went through and added a few boxes about where the different taxes come from. There's often confusion that if people see that their tax bill has gone up, often people immediately assume that city taxes have gone up, city is the cause for an increase in taxes and that's not necessarily always the case. So on the left-hand side, on the lower corner, the first amounts you see detailed is number six would be the county's proposed tax amount, in this case, is the final amount, but on the statements you've gotten, you could view it that way. Number seven is the city's tax amount, right? So that's our segment of the tax bill. And below that, the school district has two items, 9A and 9B, that combined to make up their portion that they're levying against the property. Then back to the right side, there is a special testing district here. East Central Regional Development Commission puts on a small tax on this parcel for 2020, it was $3.12. Add all those numbers up, that's how we get to the 2628. So that's the basics of understanding your tax statement. Property tax calculation. So, if you've heard one of my budget presentations before, I talk a lot about tax rates and I don't spend a lot of time talking about the levy. And the reason, there's a few reasons for that. One is a levy is always going to go up over time. If for no other reason than inflation, your levy will go up over time. Because of that, it's not necessarily going to give you any great information over time and it certainly is not going to give you any great information when you compare yourself to another city. That's not particularly a useful number in that regard. Tax rate does a much better job understanding and providing information over time and a comparison between cities. Tax rate combines the information of the levy amount and also market value. So that's a useful tool to be able to compare yourself to prior years, give yourself a projection for where you're going in the future, but also compare yourself to the other cities that we're competing against for businesses and residents. Real simply, tax rate, very simple calculation, it's a little more complex than this, but very simply put, tax rate is simply the levy amount divided by tax capacity, which can just be understood generally as your market value. And then you take your property value and multiply by the tax rate and there's your property tax amount. I've added one point to the slide at the bottom, this comes up over and over. Property owners can appeal their assessed value, but it's often misunderstood when that occurs. To appeal the assessed value on your property, you need to handle that in April at a local Board of Equilization meeting or in June at the county Board of Equilization meeting. And when you do that, you are contesting the value for the coming year, not the year that you're in. So if you're looking at the value on your statement today and saying, "That's not right", you know, that was an issue that should have been addressed, you know, six months ago. So keep that in mind going forward. If you're not happy with your value today, it might be wise to make a note for April and June this coming year. So then we talk about components of a municipal budget. All right. So we have a levy, we've got a certain amount, we've identified a tax rate. What does this mean? I break down municipal budget into four broad categories, the first being operating revenues and expenditures. The revenues for that come from general fund levy and from rates, right? So we have charges for services, those types of things. The expenses are calculated based on three and five-year averages, six months actuals, right? I really care about, you know, if I'm budgeting for a phone bill, I care about what happened in the last six months, I don't care what happened on a phone bill six years ago. That doesn't provide any useful information. To my mind, competency on operating expenses or revenue is relatively easy. Most, if not all, cities should be able to attain competency on that and be able to do that without too much trouble. Next category would be intergovernmental revenue. So this is money that is changing hands from one government agency to us. You generally are going to think of this as being LGA, Local Government Aid, or grants. The expenses on that is going to be the regulations and the legislation, you know, the things that you need to do to be compliant in order to get those funds. Competency, everybody's going to be competent because you're legally required to do so. If you're not, they will make you compliant. Next category would be capital projects. So this is, these are the type of projects that require an engineer, right? Talking about rebuilding streets, putting in new water and sewer mains, you know, the large projects that require an engineer in order to be able to get those done. In that instance, we're looking at a 20-year horizon, we want to know out into the future, what projects do we have out there? How much are they going to cost? When are we going to need that money? Again, on this one, competency is attained by most, simply by paying an engineer good money to put together a good plan. That's kind of how that works. Fourth component, and a lot of cities have a hard time with this, is capital maintenance and replacement. This is different than capital projects. Capital maintenance and replacement is talking about things like replacing your roof, buying new squad cars, buying new snowplows, tuck pointing brickwork, these types of things that often fall through the cracks, are neglected and not remembered and left until the last minute and then kind of, you know, there's a scramble to find the funds for those types of items. Here, we look at a 20-year horizon on that. And this is really where there's the largest marginal competitive advantage to be had. Most cities, if they have a maintenance replacement plan, they maybe do five years at best. We're looking out 20 years and behind the scenes, I'm looking out 20 years beyond that even to make sure that I see any problems that are coming years and years and years in advance so that if we do identify a budget shortfall in 17 or 23 years out, we have ample time to adjust the budget accordingly slowly over time rather than doing it all at once. As we go through this budget here, we're going to do a budget summary here in a little bit on a couple of slides as we go through these. Couple of things to think about, if we want to make some tweaks to the budget to, you know, to maybe to lower the levy or something to that effect, there are some things I would keep in mind. One, if we're delaying street improvement projects, please remember that, you know, all the projects that we have on the list currently were ones that we identified back in 2010 and had originally been intended to be started in 2012 and it just never happened. We're starting to get through the first of those now, but we've got them all queued up and they've kind of been waiting a while. There comes a point where if we wait too long, mill and overlays start to turn into full reconstructs and then the price tag doubles real fast. So we don't maybe want to consider that too heavily. Another item would be delay or eliminate capital maintenance and replacement items. You know, the capital maintenance and replacement plan I have is, you know, several thousand cells deep. Department heads have reviewed that, we're in our third iteration, it's getting to a point where the document is pretty tight. You know, if council can identify any items on there that we think we don't need, you know, staff is always willing to listen to that, but I think we're in a pretty good spot on that. Another option would be reduce operating expenditures. A lot of times, reducing operating expenditures can be difficult, a lot of times you've got contracts in place, whether it's for communication equipments or union contracts or what have you, that are going to prevent you from taking action today to reduce those operating expenditures. Another option that would be available in this particular budget year is altering the fund balance contribution. This budget has an extra $76,000 going toward fund balance. We've talked about this countless times over the last few years, that our fund balance is too low, we dropped down to 31%, we need to be at least 50 and I would prefer us being up closer to 70, but we'll discuss that more in 2021. But the only way we're going to get back to that level where we've got a cushion that we can count on to maintain a consistent tax rate in the future and mitigate the risk of that tax rate shooting up and down real fast is to start putting money into fund balance. And so we're going to do that a little bit at a time. So this is another new slide for this year. Budget summary. The, it's kind of a lot of information there, but for the most part, we're talking today about the column on the left, proposed 2021 budget. When it comes to general fund revenues, I'll keep the comments, someone short, at the top, you see that negative 76,018, or 76,018. Understand that negative means that we are contributing to fund balance. It's a negative, but it's a good thing. That means we're putting money into fund balance and floating that percentage up. If council did elect to, it's not my recommendation, but if council did elect to eliminate that contribution to fund balance, the tax rate would go from being a 0% increase to down to 59.64, which would be a reduction of 2.5%. So that is an option that is on the table. Otherwise, the additional revenue that we see this year compared to 2020, most of that is coming from taxes. We've got the addition of the COPS grant, right? We've hired an officer where the federal government's going to pay a portion of that cost for the first three years. And also this year, we have a transfer from the EDA, which is usually not how that works, but for a variety of reasons, we've floated a pretty heavy cash balance in the EDA. That's really not how that's supposed to work. They should be a net zero every year and they've gotten to a point where they have well over 125,000 in cash. So we're going to transfer some of that back out, get that back into the general fund, which is where it came from originally. If there are any questions from the council along the way, please let me know.
Are those the 2018 actuals still high? Do you know?
For...
And everything else, the actual expenditures in 2018? You know, like 700,000?
Oh, 2018, yeah, 2018. So that miscellaneous item, that was a subsidy payment to the hotel. Almost that entire amount at the bottom there, that 977, about solid 90% of that was a check cut to the hotel. That had been an unbudgeted expense at the beginning of the year. Bottom portion, I'll run through a couple of highlights on the expenditures. 2021, we're going to save about $82,000 on special projects. That's a, that was a short-term transition deal with the outgoing city administrator, no longer in the budget, so that saves us 82 grand. We've got a sizable increase in police. There's a handful of reasons for that. One, we've added an officer and even though we're getting federal money, it's not covering all the costs, we're spreading that out, so we are incurring some costs on that. We're adding a secretary. Also got some changes in insurance elections, which is any employee's prerogative to do so. Also remember that we're bringing in code enforcement's brought into the police department, right? We used to have a separate line item for code, now that's been largely brought into the police department. And also, we've seen in the last five years, a nearly threefold increase in workers' confidence. And that is getting to be kind of a lot of money. In the building inspection department, you'll notice that we're back to 27, something that's in line with 2017 numbers. In between those budget years, we had Minspec and we paid out, depending on the fee, 60% to 70% of those revenues back to Minspec. So that's a sizable change there. Transfers out have been reduced. The obligation, we had borrowed money for the 2018 improvements that were associated with the hotel project. We had borrowed money from the liquor fund in order to complete that project. We repaid that over two years and so that obligation has been fulfilled, so that's been, we've been able to pull that out of the budget. Other item you might notice is that there's a big reduction this year's budget on miscellaneous items. And that was simply in 2020 budget, we had a, what we did was we added to fund balance by 75,000, but we had presented it as a designated reserve. And my auditor suggested that they didn't like that, they would rather actually have me show it at the top of the sheet as a contribution to fund balance the way that it's presented here. So I have obliged them, so. Go to the next slide. So here we've got everything from EDA, street construction, the enterprise funds. We've just got the basic summary on these to be able to fit this on one page, but if there are any questions, any specifics, we've got the budget in the packet and you can certainly ask any questions that you'd like on that. On EDA, we show a net loss of 125,000 and that is represented by the fact that we are transferring that excess cash out of EDA. I think last time I checked, there's still going to be about $35,000 heavy, but you know, that's okay.
And before you go any further, Mr. Becker, if there's anybody that's on Zoom, I would just ask that you unmute yourself and speak. I know there's been a lot of questions throughout our community about our budget, among other things. And Mr. Becker's here to answer all those, he's the guy that can answer them to the fullest compared to anybody on this council, that's for sure.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up, as I maybe should have mentioned that right out of the chute. Normally at these meetings, anybody that wants to speak is here and is in person and I'm going to have an opportunity to speak to them face-to-face this evening, give them my card and have a chance to follow up with them. So if there's anybody listening on Zoom, please contact City Hall, I'm happy to talk with you, set an appointment, we can still meet face-to-face, but we just kind of have to set that.
We're going to take questions at the end of your presentation though, right?
Yep.
Perfect, then we'll hold them off until then.
Yeah, but if somebody wants to get in touch with me, what would have been after the meeting, please call City Hall.
Yeah, I recommend if you have any questions, anybody on Zoom or in the community at that, Mr. Becker's a very smart man when it comes to numbers and he'll bore you for hours about it, so. I always say that because I always sit and, "Mike, just get to the brass tacks here, what do we need in nowhere?" And Mike could talk to me for an hour and then in the last 10 minutes, he'll tell me what I wanted to hear.
Well, I like to, I like to talk budget, what can I say?
He loves your job.
He's lonely.
All right. So that wraps up for the EDA. Next is Fund 425, street construction. Big thing to know there is that, you know, revenues there are made up of a special levy, right? We've got a segregated levy for that, so when all those dollars come in, they are going to street projects and that is the thing they are for. Also, we assume state aid, although this year, the state aid would be in question. Right now, it doesn't seem like it's going to be coming, but if it comes, we'll move forward with the Main Street project. If it doesn't, the plan would simply be slide everything back one year, do Main Street next year and just plug away at it. That's, you know, that might just be, have to be the conception that we make in the current times, but I think that's doable. And then to the extent that we've maybe collected a little money more than we needed, we'll readjust that street fund, street project levy next year. And perhaps if we're delaying the projects all year, perhaps have an opportunity to bring that down, so.
You're good at this budget thing, why don't we just start budgeting for all that now, Mike?
I'm going to present the optimistic budget that we'll get to do Main Street, but understand that I do have a plan for if we don't get to. I've thought it through. Next would be pavement management.
Don't you talk about me for crying out loud?
Next, pavement management, I think we've had pavement management in place since 2015, I think is the first year. This is Fund 440, this is funded through utility franchise fees and we've been carrying a cash balance in that fund sufficient to cover a one-year's project. So even if utility franchise fees just abruptly disappeared, state statute changed, they abruptly disappeared, we would still be able to do the project for next year anyway. So we've got a nice balance there. 601 Water Fund. The interesting thing is that the net income loss is showing at nearly 400,000, but the net cash flow is 7. Reason is capital expense and depreciation. So we budget for depreciation despite the fact that we do have a coherent capital improvement plan. This isn't a funded depreciation model, but we still have been putting that in there. $328,000 will go to rebuilding filter under drain one next year and that will be the first of four that we'll do in consecutive years. So this will be a trend for a little while, spending solid 350, 400,000 on those. We also have 109,000 for pump at wellhouse one, or wellhouse two, I should say. So we're spending a little money, but that was, that's part of the plan, everything will work out great on that. Next one, sewer, 602. Same deal there, we don't have a lot of capital expenditures, but we do have a depreciation expense in there of 565, so that makes it look a little bit worse, but then when you drill down into that net cash flow, you realize that we're putting away enough money to be able to cover that future mechanical plant in 20 years. So we'll be able to get there and fund that properly. Stormwater, 603. This one includes 223,000 capital expenditures. This would be theoretically, this would be the end of all the stormwater maintenance stuff that we've been trying to do for the last five years. But one heads up is that if that Main Street project doesn't go through, some of that 223 is going to get peeled off and we'll have to wait until we do get around to that Main Street project. Liquor fund, 609. If you go through the detail, you'll notice that there, it would appear in the detail for operating expenditures that there is no money for a new liquor store. That is represented in our capital improvements budget and those expenses are coded to an account called construction in progress. So they don't go into a regular expense account that is going to throw things off a lot, right? So when you get your quarterly report on the finances, you're not going to look at that and say, "Oh my gosh, we've parametered money." No, you'll see it properly represented so that it's an understandable comparison of operating revenues and expenditures year to year. Next is Fund 614, this is general fund technology. This is just simply paid for primarily through cable franchise fees. Then the last item is capital improvements, is how it's labeled, that's our capital maintenance and replacement fund, 920. So this is capital maintenance and replacement items for the general fund. Just some of the highlights, just to go over, it's in the packet, but just to make clear, some of the bigger stuff, in 2021, there's 49,000 for a new squad, we've got 8,700 for streetlight repair, another $10,000 for streetlight infill, about 25,000 for fire suppression at the community center, 248,000 for the amphitheater at Bluebird Park and another 206,000 to have restrooms that will accompany that at Bluebird Park and would also then service a 2023 splash pad. All of that is in the works and been planned for and budgeted. So fiscal management. The takeaway here, if you're going to make municipal fiscal management really simple, it's I do not want big ups or big downs, right? You don't want the tax rate going up double digits, you don't want it going down double digits. If you're going up or down double digits, you probably messed up two, three, four years prior. It should be able to go up or down at a steady pace. The idea being is that if you are well-prepared, that is the result that you will get and regardless of what anybody's tax bill is, the thing they want, the thing they want to avoid more than anything is a surprise. Nobody ever wants to open their tax statement to see a surprise. They may not like the amount, can always understand that, but if they're going to get a surprise, it should not be because of the city. We'll let it be because of the school district or the county, but it won't be because of So some of the, you know, a little more detail on how we do that. We're going to manage all those components of the municipal budget, including operating revenues and expenditures, right? We're going to have a plan for those things, but what really sets you apart on fiscal management and being able to keep that tax rate steady and not have the big ups and the big downs is properly funding capital projects and the capital maintenance and replacement. And this is why we're talking about, we're looking out 20 years, I'm looking out an extra 20, going out 40 just to be safe. But the idea being is that I want to set aside a consistent amount of money over time so that I can cash flow even the big expenditures. So for example, for capital projects in 2028, we're going to schedule nearly $1.4 million of projects. But the levy in 2028 is only going to be 350 bucks, 350,000, right? We want that levy amount to be consistent even when expenditures are doing this. We just assume not have a single resident know that expenditures have gone up and down wildly, we want that levy to be nice and consistent. The same is true for capital maintenance and replacement. 2025, we're going to spend nearly $4 million in, actually in 2025, that's largely because of the new public works building. We've got that planned and covered as well. But in that year, I'm projecting the levy for that fund to only be 494, you know, 490, just 500,000 against nearly 4 million. So that's really how you get to a point where you have a coherent plan and you can get that tax rate to be nice and consistent year after year. So considerations in setting levy, capital project funding, we've talked about that. Capital maintenance replacement funding, we've talked about that, got 20 years, we cash flow it all, we care about the low point in cash on any given 20-year span and reevaluate that every year to make sure that we're in the right spot. This is another item inside of the budget, we do still have these payments that are going back to water and sewer. It's going to take 10 years, we're already now three years through, but we've got, you know, basically 100,000 bucks a year that leaves the general fund, goes back to those enterprise funds. So we'll have to pay that back, but each time we do, that adds to fund balance and gives us a little more cushion, a little more risk mitigation for future budgets. So all that said, here we are to the proposed levy. So I was talking about how we break this down into segments and identify certain needs, right? We've got a general fund levy at about 1.9 million, but then we have a capital maintenance levy that goes directly into Fund 920, it's not used for anything else. That is what it is used for and that's at 438. That's gone up a lot since last year primarily because we added public works building, amphitheater, restrooms, splash pad. We've added some projects, but we're doing all that and we're putting a little bit extra into the levy this year so that we can... We've added some projects, but we're doing all that and we're putting a little bit extra into the levy this year so that we can avoid issuing debt and avoid the extra costs on insurance, excuse me, issuance costs and interest on those bond issues and just not issue bonds at all. Street construction levy, looks like it's going up a lot, but remember last year, we actually cut the street construction levy a little bit to be able to give a little bit of tax relief. So now the obligation then is to, we got to bump that up a little bit, get that back to snuff this year. EDA levy, pretty stagnant, it's a, just a percent of estimated market value by statute. A pavement levy, that's related to a hotel project as well. And then we've got the debt service levy. All these debt items are going to be off the books by about 2030 or 2031. And hopefully at that point, we will be talking about debt free on anything that would require tax dollars. That'd be, that'd be a great day for the city.
There's the graphs, I've been waiting for some graphs.
So graphs. So this is levy history. Give you the one year comparison. Uh, this gives you a little idea about how this works with a levy. The reason we're seeing the roller coaster on this graph is simply because of the Great Recession. Right? I mean, ultimately that's, otherwise you would see generally at most cities, you would see just more of a, a steady kind of uphill reflecting the expansion of the population, expansion of the staff and reflecting inflation. Next one, we see the proposed tax rate. The budget that's in front of you would keep the tax rate at 61.18, which is what we had last year. That was our final certified amount, that's where we will end up this year, at least based on the county's latest numbers. Five year average tax rate is 74.77. So even though the change is, is zero, we're not going up or down, we have come down a long way in the last five years. Four years really. We've, we've dropped that tax rate a lot. And we'll see that on a future page. Just for reference, 15 year average is 67%. So we're well under that 15 year average as well. This is tax rate history. This is the one, this is the graph I like and I'm sure, I'm sure the mayor is interested in this one. What I want everybody to notice on this is the way we're doing this on the tax rate up until the last three years and now we go flat. To my mind, that is how it should be. If you have to go up or you have to go down, that's fine. Neither is inherently good or inherently bad, but it ought to be well planned and well thought out so that it is slow and consistent. If it has to go up, it goes up slow. If it has to go down, it goes down slow. Otherwise, it should sit nice and even. It should be slow and steady. It should not be, it should not be a roller coaster. If you have a roller coaster, residents are going to open their tax statements, they're going to get a surprise and nobody likes a surprise. We ought not do it. And if we can, if we can keep our tax rate steady and get debt free within, in about 10 years, that, that should be something we can all be, be excited about, or at least me anyway.
I'll be with you.
So it does, I feel like I'm the most excited guy in the room, but yeah, it's okay. Levy tax rate history, this has been a new addition here in the last few years to the, to the budget presentation. This is simply just an effort to get some of our core statistics, some of our basic fundamentals onto the public. Let people be able to see what has happened, what has happened, what is happening, where are we heading? For me, there's lots of great information that I love to look at on here, but if I'm going to point anybody into one area, it would be the second to bottom, well, actually really those bottom two rows, right? The tax rate and then the percent change from prior. And again, you just look at that last row, you look see that percent change from prior, you see a lot of up and down and you see some, some increases that are double digits and then a decrease that is double digits. And, and to my mind, that's what we should be seeking to avoid. Let's not, let's not surprise anybody. So we talked about all this stuff and I referenced earlier, I think it was on the second or third slide, that, you know, one of the things we're doing here is accepting the reality that whether we like it or not, we are competing. We are competing against other cities for residents and to retain residents. We're competing against other cities for businesses and to retain businesses. That's a helpful understanding, but if you have no metrics, if you have nothing to measure it against and understand your progress, it may not be a useful conversation to have. So I've added this slide this year. I could have put umpteen cities on here. I picked some of just the closest ones and some others that we might, we might think about as something that we could be in the future. So you see in the middle, it's grayed out. The ones at the bottom are the ones with the highest tax rate. We are in that group, but we are faring much better than Princeton, Cambridge and Brown. And that's great. That's what we want to be doing. But we need to have our trend be moving into that middle group that's grayed out, right? Where we talk about Oak River North Branch, St. Francis, we're in that 45 to 50% tax rate. To my mind, when I look at my future projections on our levian tax rate, I see a clear path to being, to 10 years, being in that 47 to 50% range. I think we can get into that tier in that time, in that timeline conservatively.
Is that just because Isani is growing infrastructure, so there's more costs? What's the difference between these cities and Isani, that lower end response?
Yes. When you, when you're looking at this, especially when you go up to the top, above the gray part, you know, you look at those top ones, the top five. The big difference between them and us is, one is population and two is for most of them, it is the additional commercial tax base. In Minnesota, commercial tax base pays at two times the rate that residential does. There's a first hundred thousand dollar exclusion, but if you've got some companies like Atsigo has got, you know, a large Target store, they've got the Outlet Mall, they've got some other big commercial items, that adds a gigantic amount to their tax base and it makes keeping a low tax rate much easier. I think that's a direction that we can go, that ought to be our goal. And we ought to be saying, here's how we can do better than our neighbors and make ourselves more attractive to retain and attract residents and businesses. But we have work to do, but we'll start, we'll start revisiting this on a yearly basis and be able to see how are we doing against our, against the people that we're competing against and we'll find out how well we really do. If. Yeah, so. Yeah, so on that, on that type of thing, it would depend a great deal. You know, this is an incomplete deal, right? So we also care a great deal, and we just went through this with the rate study, we also care a great deal about what are our water sewer rates? This doesn't tell you anything about what East Bethel's water sewer rates might be. Their water rates might be twice what ours are. That matters. It's not represented here. But that's something we would otherwise generally review once every three years when we go through that rate study and compare ourselves and say, here's how we're actually doing it on, on rates. And this year, if anybody listening has, didn't know, council did approve a substantial rate decrease for water and sewer for, for 2021. So we're heading in the right direction, but we've got some work to do. We'll continue to revisit this. So that concludes my part. I just put this up. We did meet the Department of Revenues guidelines on how to run this meeting and what topics we do and, we do need to address and discuss. The last point that we have to address is that we do need to take public comment. We need to provide a reasonable amount of time for people to make comment and, and then that's it. But otherwise, I'll address any questions on Zoom or council or whoever.
At this time, if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to speak, I just ask that you press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record and ask away. I thought we'd at least have one.
I figured as much, but. I'd like to know, Mike, how much, how much money did we save on, when we go from min inspect to, back to the building inspector? I think we saved quite a bit there when I was reading the budget.
Yeah, so think of it roughly like this, rough math, building permit related revenues of about 325, 350? 325,000, 350,000. And I would normally then be budgeting an amount to pay two min inspector of about 225,000. Current building official with all benefits, workers comp, everything included is 122,800 some odd dollars. So there's a substantial savings there. It's a, it's a solid swing of at least a hundred thousand dollars benefit to the city. Now, we can't make money on building fees. I mean, make that clear. But the way it has to work is, is that you have to be able to feast when you can feast because there will be famines in building permits. There will be years where you, you know, last year, last year we issued over a thousand permits. That's, that's a feast year, but there are going to be years where we might issue 40. And we're still going to have those costs on that building official, so we do need to be able to bring that money in when we can so that we still have that fund balance available to be able to keep that building official on the payroll and, and doing the work that needs to be done on that.
I for one feel that I think, you know, us keeping the tax, tax rate flat at zero is huge. I, I don't, if we, if we drop tax by 2.5%, I don't think we're doing ourselves any favors. I think by keeping, you know, as budgeted and strive towards that 10, 20 year levy, dropping everything off where we can pay for all this stuff without tax dollars, that's huge. If we, if we were to drop tax rate in 20 years, we may have to make, jump it up 6, 8% to try to cover that. So I think we're better off just leaving it the way it is and making things work. And if we can keep a flat tax of 0% across the board and keep working this budget this way, I think we're doing, doing our residents a huge favor.
Not, not only that, Councilman Lundin, but we have all these projects planned and we're still keeping that at zero.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. That's, that's what I'm saying is we're, we're getting things done without having to bond and ta, and raise taxes for things.
I think one way to understand what, the reason we do the things that we do, the way that we do it is this, is that if we were to bond for that public works building in 2025, the interest and issuance costs on that bond issue pays for the amphitheater, the restrooms and the splash pad. Pays for all of those. By not issuing bonds, we save enough money to cover all three of those projects. In the long run for a city, if you're going to look out over decades and you're going to run your city in this manner, you, you save your residents millions of dollars over time. It's a very big deal. And that's how we're affording to do so many projects is by making sure that we are patient. We're going to wait on that public works building until 2025. We're going to set our money aside, but we're going to take that savings and, and put it back in the community and give something that the residents are looking forward to.
Yep, and I, and I, we've had this conversation, I think there's a few parks that we can alleviate putting money into anymore. And I think we can save ourselves some money there, you know, I, I've always been a firm believer, Bluebird Park is our, our showpiece park. And I think we should be showing that thing and, and making that the showcase park.
It's our central park, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll add to your points on fund balance. The reason I presented a contribution of 76,000 to fund balance rather than just presenting that 2.5% decrease is that in my estimation, in my analysis, there is more value in the risk mitigation effects in the future budgets by putting more money into fund balance than there is by eating it up now, right? Because someday the economy is not going to do us well, right? We're going to see another Great Recession type turn down and we have, we have to have been putting away money into fund balance. Otherwise, people really will get a shock and a surprise when that day comes. And that will be the day, right, when that economy turns down and we don't have to send the tax rate through the roof. That will be the day that the residents realize that we've been doing this right for a long time.
So how do we, how do we avoid, I mean, I'm talking about in general, it seems like most of the time we don't have a whole lot of surprises, but these people that walk in the door here and ask us about their tax rate, why is that, that we do still get a few surprises? Is that the county assessment on their property or?
Yeah, so what I've seen the last, last year and this year is there's been a handful of properties that we're seeing, you know, 15 to 25% increases in their value all in one year. Generally, that should only happen if you've done some major renovation, right? You revamped your entire first floor, maybe second floor too, or you had a completely unfinished basement that had 13 or 1600 square feet and you have now finished it and put nice fixtures, nice finishes in, you know, then maybe. I mean, but even then, 25% is kind of a stretch even at that point. My understanding from discussions I had last year and it kind of looks to be repeating this year is that there were some parcels that got missed. In some cases, five, 10, even 20 years, it just got missed and did not get their valuations looked at. Normally, you would be running a cycle on all your properties to be able to look at, go and inspect every property every five years on the button. Even if there have been no permits pulled and you have no reason to believe the value has changed in any substantive way, you should still be actually visiting that parcel and verifying that. And it looks like that hasn't been done. And so if you haven't had your parcel looked at by the county assessor's office for five, 10 or 20 years, yeah, once they look at it, once they know there's an issue, they're obligated by state statute to fix it at that moment. They don't have a choice.
Mr. Merrill, he knows this, a couple of years ago when they came in, him and his parents came in and they were just livid on their taxes. We sat down and looked at it and they realized the city portion wasn't the big hit. It was the evaluation of the property went up, the school tax, county tax, and the cities was the minus, you know, minus, the municipal portion of it. And that, I just had a conversation with somebody via Facebook. They just said, why did my taxes go up, you know, 20%? I said, you need to look at your tax statement. You got, I see, the city of Isani taxes is at zero. So we didn't increase taxes. It's county and the school board and you got to look at that. But first, you got to look at your valuation of your property. If your property valuation went up, your taxes are automatically going up. I don't care where you live. So it's, even if the city's tax was zero, if your property, property value went up, say a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, you're going to pay a hundred thousand dollar more in taxes and even if the county and the school board didn't put anything on it, your taxes are increased automatically and there's nothing anybody can do about it. Unless you want to live in a crack house, that's what you got.
Yep. Yeah, that's the easy math on, on, you know, these last couple of years having a zero or near zero change in the tax rate is. The easy math is if your home doesn't go up in value, your city tax didn't change. You're paying the exact same city tax. If your, if your value went up 5%, yep, you're going to see a little bump, but otherwise, that's the easy math.
I would like to share, thank you for Jenny and our Zoom meeting tonight, that the full council budget or proposed budget is on our website currently. And the presentation that our finance director, Mike Becker, shared will be on our website tomorrow morning.
The only thing I'd like to say in closing, Mr. Becker, is it's amazing what a city can actually do when the finance director is available to do his job. And you've done a remarkable job at that. I cannot thank you enough for the hard work and the dedication that you put in for the city of Isani and, I mean, this council, I think we wanted a lot of things and projects to be done and for you to lay it out the way you did it. And we wanted that 0% tax increase and, I mean, you've, you're a remarkable man and that's why I love throwing numbers at you and, and giving you some questions that sometimes make you say hmm. But you always seem to come back with an answer, so I appreciate your hard work, your dedication. I can't thank you enough, sir.
I appreciate the kind words and I appreciate being able to, to do my thing here. I really like being able to just do what I know how to do and do it well. I like that.
I would agree and I would also, if there's anybody, whether it's in our public, on this Zoom meeting, anybody that has any questions, comments or concerns, whether it's their property taxes, the budgets for the city or any, anything that is needed on a city level, by all means, reach out to Mr. Becker at City Hall and I guarantee you, he can answer you nine times, nine and a half times on a 10 I'll even give you.
And if any residents want five minutes of my time, they get five minutes of my time. If they want two hours of my time, they get two hours of my time. That's how that goes.
Mr. Gordon had something to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
So my property was one of those ones that went up 25% on the, on the market value. And I didn't do any big improvements or anything like that. It's just, and, and I mean, it's the market value, of course, according to the county is always lower than the real market value. I mean, they're supposed to get close, but they, they miss it by, by quite a bit, but, which I'm thankful for, but it did you up 25%. So my actual tax for the city went up because my homestead exclusion went down. From the previous year, my actual tax from the city rose like 32% more than it was the year prior. So our, our total levy is 304,000 more than it was last year. And I was, coming into this meeting, I was thinking, well, where, where are we putting that money? And it sounds like 76,000 is going to the general fund, which is, is good that we're replenishing that because it was drained obviously for, in past administration. drained, obviously, for, in past administrations. But I heard you mention a squad car for forty-nine thousand. That seems reasonable. An amphitheater for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, is that?
Yep, two forty-eight and then a restroom, two oh six. Yeah, the, the big jump on the levy is, is really is not so much in the general fund as it is in that capital maintenance replacement and the street construction levy. And the, and the capital maintenance replacement is because we've added some projects, right? Including the Public Services Building out in 2025, which is affecting levies now because we're saving up our money. We're going to pay cash. But then also we reduced that street construction levy last year from what I had proposed. So we got to get, we got to get some money back into that now to to get back, hold, keep those projects on par.
Right. Which I don't have.
There's a lot of projects. There's a lot of projects, Councilman Gordon, that were, they were just kicked down the path, you know, like our street maintenance. A lot of these plans were taken away by previous administration. And this council has put them back in place and asked Mr. Becker to figure out those numbers. So, I mean, you're, you're going to see that coming in this budget as well. I mean, we, we actually, is it going to cost us a little bit here and there? Yes. But we're doing the right thing to make sure our residents have what they want and need. So, I mean, we're going to see that. I know that's one thing that's kind of impacted our budget. A lot of our projects that we all sat here and spoke of, which we do every year, which is coming up. I mean, there, there's a, a lot of thing. I'm curious, and Mr. Becker, why would that go up thirty-two percent? He kind of floored me when he said that.
No, he brings up a good point. He brings up a good point about the double whammy of when your value starts to rise, especially in a rise significantly like that, you get a phase out of your, of your market value or your homestead exclusion. So you end up, not only do you, is, not only did your value go up and you're starting from a higher point to begin with, but now the exclusion, the amount that gets deducted, went down. And so you end up with that, it ends up being kind of a double whammy. You know, it starts out at, the most exclusion you can get is thirty-seven thousand, I believe, and that phases out at, phases out at three or four hundred thou, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, something like that. I mean, it's a fairly high number, but, yeah. And then that's something I've talked to other residents about, that they've noticed the same thing. You know, they say, well, how come the total increase then is slightly more? Well, it's, it's because you're, you're seeing that, the effect of that lowered exclusion amount.
No, and to your point, I don't have a problem with making sure we're staying on top of the street maintenance and, and those street projects. I mean, that's what we need to be doing. That's a legitimate function of what we're doing. So the amphitheater was two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Splash pad, you said, was how much?
The restrooms are two oh six. That's what, two oh six. That's what we're going to do in, in, in 2021. Splash pad will be in 2023. And if memory serves me correctly, I think that's two hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Okay. But so for this budget here right now, how much of this budget is going towards those, or being budgeted for those projects then? So you said 2023 is the splash pad?
Yep. But 2021 is the amphitheater. This coming year will be amphitheater and the restrooms, and together that's about four hundred and fifty thousand, rough math.
Okay. So if we take the, the amphitheater out, how much does that, you said, how much does that save us?
About two fifty.
About two fifty. Okay. So, I mean, and then you get your seventy-six, basically, you know, I mean, that's to the general fund. Like I said, I don't have a problem replenishing the general fund. But I just think that we've got a lot more income coming in. I don't think an amphitheater is a legitimate function of what we're doing here. And I would like to see that taken out and then the tax rate decrease.
Have you ever attended a street dance?
Yes.
How many?
One or two.
How many since you've been on the council?
One or two. I don't, I don't never attended one as a, as a person actually attending. I worked, worked one of the trucks.
So you really don't get to see what kind of crowds are there?
I've seen the crowds, yeah.
They're growing every year. We're going to run out of room on Main Street. Either that or we're just going to have to sprawl out in a two mile distance on Main Street to where now we put it in that, that park and we're not only in a fishbowl in an amphitheater that has what these bands need, what our residents need, and now our police department controls the crowd even better. So I, I'm kind of confused on how you could say that that's not something you feel we need.
An amphitheater?
Yeah.
I mean.
I've been after that amphitheater for about ten years. And that's, I'm going to tell you right now, that is one of my biggest passions. That and finishing up some of these sidewalks. And I have been doing that as what I've been diligent about for ten years. I'm going to, I'm going to be totally honest with you, Jimmy. We took money out of the taxes last year to drop them on your recommendation, and now we're paying it back. But we're still leaving our taxes flat at zero, not deducting, not increasing, but it's flat. We're still getting what this city, I'm not just saying for myself, I'm saying this for the residents. That amphitheater in Bluebird Park isn't for me. It's for these residents. And this city needs to give something back to these residents as we've been charging them for taxes for years. I can sit, I'll sit here and argue with you all day long. I'll argue all day long about this. We cut taxes on your recommendations last year, took it out of the street fund. Now we got to pay that back. Let's take that out again and see where that does, and it's going to change it immensely again. I don't want to see a drop in tax. I do not want to see this. I want to see this. And I guarantee you, every resident in this town would rather see their taxes this way than doing this. And that's what's going to happen. If we start taking this out and this out and this out and this out, taxes are going to do this.
I'm not talking about taking out the money to pay back the street project that we cut last year so that we could keep taxes lower, which is something the mayor has, has thanked me for in the past because it helped him keep a campaign promise.
And I did.
And you did. We kept the tax rate even. You did not raise tax, the tax rate.
And I don't plan on it.
Right. But this year, my, my point is, is that we're bringing in an extra three hundred and four thousand. And just because we can justify bringing it in because our tax rate is staying the same, doesn't mean that we, we have to take that money. I agree with giving back to the residents. I want to give them their money back. I want to let them keep more of their money. The amphitheater, I just don't think the amphitheater is a necessary.
Or we can give them amenities that these residents are so much aching for, because I've heard it time and time again.
And I think they're aching more for money in their pocket.
Then, then they need to do something with their property value. Drop your property value. Because that's the only way your taxes are going to decrease. We drop ours two and a half percent. It ain't going to change the county's outlook on it. It's still going to be the same. So they're still going to get that two and a half percent. Our residents aren't. So let's be realistic. We can raise it two and a half and we'll get the two and a half, and the county doesn't get anything. But you turn around and take it back and take off two and a half percent. Sure, it looks like you did something, but it's not going to change the fact. The fact is, the reason why you're paying so much more is because your property value was increased that much.
You don't think I understand that?
Well, but you want to keep taking, you want to keep taking things out. I'm not going to argue this anymore.
You're saying if we cut our levy, that the county gets that money and the, the individual homeowner doesn't see that? That's BS. You know they see that.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
No, they don't. I'm going to tell you something. You do not see one percent increase on anything. I don't care who you are or what you are. You do not see a one percent increase. You see five, eight, ten, twelve percent. You'll see that every single day. But you raise something a half a percent to a percent, to a percent and a half, you'll never notice it. But when you raise it fifteen percent, ten percent, five percent, you're going to go right through the roof. That's, that's the total case.
The county doesn't get to take that money. The people, the, the homeowners get less money taken out of their, their taxes.
If we pulled it out of the budget, we would simply levy a lower amount.
Right. So people would keep more of their money?
Yes. And also, I think at this point it might be good to remind the council too, is even if we pass a budget with the amphitheater in or any of these other projects in, that does not compel a council to move forward with the project. That still requires authorization later on in the year. That's, you know, at this point, we're just saying, this is the dollar. We're going to have a funding if we want to do it. I mean, just a reminder that we don't necessarily have to have a resolution on the amphitheater today. No. To the extent you might want to lower taxes, yes. But as to whether or not the amphitheater would go forward, that, that wouldn't be decided today either way.
Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
If I can. So we have six budget resolutions, or six resolutions associated with the budget. You can adopt them all in one fell swoop. You can do them one at a time, but they should at least either be, if they're one at a time, be in the order that they are presented. This is kind of a technicality. There was, the last two K, was it case? K five A and B. We do these, we've been doing these every year for a little while, but there's, it's a formality here. We did not, for whatever reason, I don't even know what the reason was, for whatever reason, we did not stick to the original debt schedule, right? When you issue bonds, you get a debt service schedule and you get a debt levy schedule, and you are to stick to that. And we haven't stuck to that for whatever reason. And so anytime you have a variance from your original adopted debt levy schedule, if you vary from that, you need to pass a resolution that is forwarded onto the county and acknowledged that you are, you are deviating from that. For the record, I've run the cash flows. We're fine. It's not going to be an issue, but we do need to go through the formality of being variant from the original schedule.
Mr. Becker, when we say, does debt levy requirements for gold bonds, every time I hear you talk about bonds, you say we're issuing debt. Are we issuing debt with that? Or what does that mean, these gold bonds?
No, this is debt that was issued in 2010 and 2011. And originally, we were following the, they, you issue the bonds, they literally give you a list. And this year, you're going to levy this much, and this year, you're going to levy this much. It'd spell it right out. Super easy, right? But at some point in time, for whatever reason, I don't know what the reason was, we varied from that schedule. And when you vary from the schedule that is originally recorded at the county, you need to adopt a resolution stating that, yes, we know we are variant by this amount. And yes, we do have the cash to pay, because in this case, they're both reductions. We do have the cash to pay. We will be fine. So just for the record on that.
So you want to do all these in just one lump sum, or what are you looking for, Mr. Becker?
That's entirely up to the council.
Yeah, he said you could do it either way.
Yeah, if you do them one at a time, do them in order. Otherwise, you can scoop them up and, and do them all at once too. That's, that's acceptable as well.
What would the council like to do separately or all in the whole?
Separately, if you don't mind.
Okay. The resolution adopting the 2021 financial budget.
Final budget, excuse me.
Final, sorry. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Oh, yeah. Dan, Mr. Collison's on there. So I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second simultaneously by Councilman Burgley and Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Councilman Collison?
Yes, I said aye.
You are an aye. So I have a four to one vote. And the motion carries. K two, resolution adopting final 2020 tax levy, collectible 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. K three, resolution adopting the final 2021 enterprise fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Resolution approving a cost of living adjustment for non-union employees.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by, motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And K five, considered debt levy variance from original bond register.
It's K five A and K five B. So there's two resolutions in there. One for the 2010 bond issue and one for the 2011 bond issue.
Thanks for the clarification, Mr. Becker.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley.
That's for A?
Can we do them both together?
Can we do them together?
A, a motion to approve both A and B.
Councilman Burgley has a motion to approve A and B, which is a resolution reducing debt levy requirements for GOBON 2010B and a resolution reducing debt levy request for GOBON 2011A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Do you say aye, Councilman Gordon?
Aye, approved.
Motion carries five zero. There you go, Mr. Becker. Let's move on to K six, ordinance amending city code, chapter three hundred, trails. Ms. Wood?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have chapter three hundred, trails before you. This is finalizing. There'll be a few ordinances on tonight. And then we have a couple more at the last meeting in December here. We've gone through a thorough review, a complete review of our city code and made amendments where necessary to be compliant with state statute and also putting policies that were previously done by resolution into ordinance, which is therefore then enforceable. There were no major changes to this chapter. It was including our snow policy, which was by resolution language into here. So residents are informed that they need to do their, their sidewalks. However, we didn't have our bituminous trails anywhere, and Public Works does plow those. That's not the responsibility of any of our residents, so that's been reflected in this chapter.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
We hear you, Councilman Collison. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance repelling and replacing chapter two thirty, park and recreation areas.
Thank you, Mayor. Chapter two thirty, we repealed it because we had significant changes. Not being really changing the chapter per se, but because there was multiple different subsections that each had a violation. And we combined the violation and enforcement, and I made that into one just at the end of the chapter. The most significant change that we made to this chapter was that we added in the sledding hill rules, which were already looked at in consideration, but now it needs to be put into the ordinance to be enforceable. We also did include a few other things, and those are listed in the memo, which include language about special event permits, language for geocaching, not permitting golf in our park areas as we've had that, when people have used some of them as a, as a range. That, that's not permitted. Language for interfering with games or recreation, language for not camping unless permitted with a permit, not to destroy trees or plantings, and then not for removing wood unless permitted. It's been posted for the ten days and.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Ordinance amending city code, chapter sixty-five, administrative penalties.
This was actually brought before committee of the whole a few months back, but we were not able to formalize it by adopting the ordinance because we needed to have this chapter go in conjunction with the fee schedule amendments, which will be happening at the next council meeting. This was really no major changes to this except for to make sure that we were within state statute and compliance. And then it also did allow for the hearing that we have for administrative penalties that they have to pay a seventy-five dollar fee, which pays for the judge. Previously, the city was eating all those costs, whether people showed or not, and the judge showed up. The city was eating those. Now people do have to pay for that seventy-five dollars to have their hearing in front of the judge.
Motion to approve or not?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance repelling and replacing chapter 216, public nuisance affecting peace, safety, and general welfare.
This chapter was reviewed at the last committee of the whole meeting. Um, some, again, making sure that we have any policies by resolution are now included into this ordinance for, to be able to be enforced. Um, we have the nuisance for grass is eight, over eight inches. The inclusion of snow and sidewalk clearing to be consistent with the policy by resolution. Inclusion of objects causing obstructions. Um, and then detailed language for notice, detailed language for notice and abatement process and procedure. And we do have the outlined, um, process and procedure for grass abatement specifically. And this is unchanged from when you saw it at the committee of the whole meeting.
I have a question, is, is this the one about also, um, naming of roads and that type of thing?
No, that would be the next one.
Oh, okay, never mind. No question at this time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. K 10, ordinance amending city code, chapter 284, streets and sidewalks.
This was also reviewed at the last committee of the whole. Uh, we had updated the language to be consistent with what we had in resolution. We also updated the language with the fire code, consistent after speaking with the fire chief. Updated some staff titles, and then included that materials on the street have to be removed, um, in a reference within our nuisance chapter. This one does have the naming of streets, though.
So I have a question on this one.
We're not having a Burgley Avenue.
What's that?
We're not having a Burgley Boulevard. Oh, that wasn't it, sorry.
I was hoping it was going to be Paul M. Burgley Boulevard. Are you ready for my question?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right, it was, it was fun. Um, so at the bottom of page three there talks about violation and penalties, and it looks like violation and penalties of naming and numbering policy. Where you really can, so if somebody had a, if you, if you misnumber your house, you can really get a $1,000 fee with a 90-day imprisonment? I've never seen us throw prison and $1,000 fees at people.
What are you in for? I misnumbered my house.
I, uh, Councilman Burgley, I did not change that language, that's what it had been previously. To be honest, I didn't review that for any changes.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you put it in there, I, this is the first, you know, when, we reviewed even the other day, I missed, I missed it then, and two as well, but, I don't know, that seems pretty stiff to me for, for misnumbering your house, I think. Am I wrong?
Well, the key is, don't misnumber your house.
Well...
I know we do have that in other chapters. Perhaps we could ask Chief Myers if he knows why, if that's consistent, I know it's in other chapters as well. Do you know if that's consistent with a misdemeanor? It's kind of like the highest, the highest...
Yeah, they're always going to list that same penalty out because of the ordinance violations of misdemeanor, no matter what it is.
Is this what the state just follows by, Chief?
Yeah, so your ordinance violations of misdemeanors, which is a $1,000 fine, 90 days in jail.
Which isn't necessarily going to happen, but it could.
Well, it could, only if you upset the judge for some other reason, but no, it, it's not going to...
Or upset the city administrator, or the police chief. Somebody's upset with you, and you...
So it's not, it has to be listed out that way, it's how they always list misdemeanor rather than saying misdemeanor. If that makes sense, they don't list misdemeanor out, they always list the maximum penalties out.
I, I get that, that, that's what they do with misdemeanors, I'm certainly familiar with that terminology. I just don't realize why numbering your house wrong is a misdemeanor, I mean, you know.
I think that's the highest that it could go, it's the maximum.
Sure, I get that portion of it.
Now, if there was a fire, and then they went out and the fire chief noticed, maybe that the numbers were two inches instead of the required four inches or something, I would imagine that there's going to be an education piece before someone would be cited with a misdemeanor.
Geez, I just put a new address sign on my house, now you're making me question, did I do that right? Should I be checking the...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go measure, I'm gonna go measure and report to the chief, I think, I think you should check his...
Councilman Burgley, I can tell you that, uh, we're not going to be arresting people for misnumbering their houses.
I think our police department has better things to do.
Well, I think so, too, I just think that, you know, these things I think are written, that if somebody...
Hey, it's a revenue generator.
Oh geez.
I think you do have to make people aware of the highest offense that could occur. Now, if they get a $20 admin citation or something like that for doing something wrong in any of our chapters, that could happen, but these are the highest, they can't be, for example, um... A gross misdemeanor for something. Per se, they could only go to a misdemeanor.
Chief, would you care to reiterate, because, uh, you know?
Well, generically, like in code enforcement, and this is to be a code enforcement issue, our code enforcement is, is going out and advising of what those code violations are. That's always the first contact to that. I'm not going to do the analogy of the, the numerics on a house, but if you have a junk vehicle in your yard, we're not going to go out there and write you a ticket for a junk vehicle in your yard the first time we see it. We're going to go and try to get the voluntary compliance, because the whole goal behind code enforcement is voluntary compliance to code. So, but with, let's use a junk car analogy, if they don't comply with our CSO going out and telling them they're in violation, we have the tools in our city code in order for us to actually deal with it appropriately. Not saying that it's exactly the same way we're going to deal with the numerics on a house, but I can see what, they list a lot of our codes in there, and it's just going to fall in the same category.
And a lot of these, Councilman Burgley, they, a lot of these were revisiting and changing or, um, visiting them right now, because they were just passed as resolutions. And that does not give our code enforcement or our police department any legs to stand on to enforce anything, to where now we're actually setting it in stone. Some of them might sound a little ridiculous, but not saying that that's what he's going to do, but he's got to have legs to stand on.
I'm not looking to do it, here's the, here's the side of it that we're not considering, though. Someone that's on probation gets one violation and they're back in jail, all of a sudden you get a misdemeanor and, you know, I think that's an automatic back to jail, isn't it, Chief? Yeah, that's my point.
But the, but he's, what he's saying is, if your numbers are wrong, he's not going to go out and pull you up and see if you're on probation and decide to throw you in jail because you've had a misdemeanor. The, the numbers, it's, it's, I know where, I know what he's saying, is we have to have this stuff in the code, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be enforced.
No, I get that, but down the road, you have someone that has something against somebody, I mean, and all of a sudden, somebody ends up in jail because of it. I'm just saying, I'm not saying I'm going to vote for it or against it, I just think that's a little harsh for your number size, so that's my view.
Write your state show, your state legislator, sir, because that's who wrote that.
Whoever wrote it, I disagree with it, so...
I make a motion to approve.
I have a question on, uh, and I, this isn't in regards to the changes either, so I'm, I'm seeing stuff like Paul's saying it, but notice to repair for, it's like 28412, and, uh, so if you have a sidewalk on your property and it's needing repair, then the property owner pays for that? Did you know that?
And that has been the way it's been written. Now, I will say, for the last five years or so, six years, most of the years I've been here, uh, we do budget approximately $2,500 to go out and do like the heaving, because technically heaving could be the homeowner's responsibility. But, but because of ADA regulations and tripping hazards, the city has taken that on, and we do different sections throughout the years, to grind those down, so I see some of the sidewalks have the grind marks. So the city does take on a lot of those repairs, too. But I think that that is a safeguard for the city, so if someone did damage the sidewalk, um, they don't get to just leave it, they do need to repair it.
I couldn't believe that, I was, I'm not fixing that sidewalk if it's on my property, and it's not my problem, you know? I didn't, but...
I just went to the same page as he did, like the city put it in there, the city maintains it, why am I paying to fix it? I'm with you on that.
And, and sometimes people do pay for it, though, because if we have assessed them, they've paid a portion of, of the, well, actually sidewalks, we should don't assess, do we? Uh, new ones, but if it was like re, reinstall, they do, right?
That's correct, yeah, if it wasn't requested.
So they may have paid for a portion of that side, like 25% of that sidewalk, if it was a reconstruction, um, but yes, they, they did.
So are they only paying for 25% of the repair?
Not the way that our code is written. Now, being in charge of streets for most of my career here, the only times typically we have to tell people that you've damaged your sidewalk, you need to repair it, is in new construction, when they've driven over it, uh, with a loader and they've cracked it, or something like that.
That's generally not them, it's a contractor, or...
Right, not the homeowner, but the contractor.
Contractors shouldn't be taking care of it.
I can't recall any...
If we can prove that they broke it, I don't have a problem with them paying for it.
Well, that's generally what I, for, I mean, granted, I'm going on two years only, but in two years, I think we've seen it once or twice. And the contractor ended up paying it, not the homeowner.
I've only seen him at my time here, that it's the contractor typically.
Yeah.
I, I've, I've never gone out and, or I've never sent a letter to a homeowner and say, and said, your sidewalk's cracked in front of your house, you need to repair that. Typically, when they've gotten into repair, either Public Works has gone, or we added to our street projects, because those are usually done at the same time, so they're crumbling at the same time the street is done, and then we might need to redo it.
But I think we ended up covering, I just wanted to point out that generally, that purpose of that in a lot of city policies is for the homeowner having caused the damage, and like you're kind of saying, if their contractor they hired was driving around to the back and cracked the, the concrete, you know, yeah, maybe they held their contractor responsible, but it's kind of their project that caused it, so that's why they would be responsible to repair it. That kind of chain reactions, is that, did they plant a tree, that, you know, the root heaved, now that their tree is what caused the problem, now they are responsible to fix it. It's a pretty common thing, though, for...
I actually do think we have one driveway that got replaced and broke it, they had a panel they had to replace, and that was a, a new driveway, not a new construction home, but new driveway.
So what happens if the driveway, if the sidewalk goes over their driveway like it does? On, uh, what am I thinking?
Over by Blossom?
Thank you.
Yep, it doesn't matter where the sidewalk is, that's where we have the easement of the sidewalk. It doesn't matter, even if, if the sidewalk is, you know, a foot in their driveway, or in that instance, 30 feet or more, yep.
Can we just add some language to that, to say, you know, if it's, the homeowner's at fault, that they're responsible?
So then if like a tree did it, they would not be responsible?
Well, I mean, if it's their tree and it did it, I guess they would be.
But then there's catch, catch 22 to that, the city made you plant that tree.
They could play that game all day.
Yeah.
Did our attorney look at that ordinance?
I mean, that's probably been there forever, that's not something you added or changed, shit.
I, I agree, Councilman Gordon and Mr. Burgley on that thing, it's, it's a tough one, but there again, nine times out of 10, you mowing your grass isn't going to wreck the concrete, the drive, the sidewalk. It's somebody driving their truck on it, and if you're hiring somebody to do the work, they should be insured enough to cover that. And if they're not, you shouldn't have hired them. Because their general liability insurance should cover that.
That was me, not him.
What, I didn't hear you. I didn't hear what you said.
Do we want us to add language that says if they're at fault?
I mean, I'd like to, I mean...
I, I, I'm almost, I, I'm with him.
I mean, it, you could take the situation, I mean, you'd have to actually say, hey, you're at fault, but I mean, the tree, I guess, I don't know, I mean...
If it's their tree, I mean...
Some stuff like that, but I mean...
And we can have, that's the problem, though.
If they're obviously at fault, or something like that, I mean, that's not something we need to investigate, but...
Well, homeowners cover a tree going down because of a storm or something, I mean, if they go out there and saw their tree down with a chainsaw or something, I could see that, but I mean, they're probably going to be covered with the homeowner's insurance anyway, wouldn't it, if they blows over in the wind or something like that?
I would believe so.
It would. That's a catch 22, Councilman Gordon.
So, what I'm hearing is, if they're at fault, or something of their property created the damage?
Sure. Yeah. I still, I mean, like you said, it probably hardly ever happens, but I mean, if it's just age that makes it need repair, then they shouldn't be responsible for it. I mean, the way that's written, that you, if the sidewalk gets old, then you would have to fix it, you know, I mean, if the city did, you'd be responsible to do it, so...
Can we still pass that with it, language added in, Ms. Wood?
Yes, I believe I will repost it, though, for the 10-day notice, if we don't hear anything, I think then...
So do we want to wait before we? No?
I amend my motion to accept the changes. So my motion to approve with the changes.
So I have a motion to approve with the changes. Before I go any further, Councilman Collison, you got anything you want to say on that, or you good?
No, I'm good.
All right. So I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to approve with the language changes, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
That was an aye, Councilman Collison?
Yes.
Four to one.
He came in aye after you said nay, did he mean aye to the...
That's why I clarified, did he say yea or nay? And he said yes, he said yea.
Oh, okay. I said nay.
Moving on to K 11, liquor store RFP fee proposal.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to Jason, as he's present for our meeting, and he will speak on this, our fee, please.
All right, yep, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, so this is the, I guess, uh, direction that we were given at the last council meeting, to at least, uh, determine what it would take to go out for proposals, to solicit for other architects and design teams. I guess, just a few things I wanted to clarify. I have verified that with a city-owned building at this cost, that a design-build option would not be allowed. Um, it's outside of state statute. Also, the plans for any, I guess, city building, it requires an architect's signature, mechanical, electrical, structural, civil engineers' signatures. So we would need to get all of those on board. This is laid out to essentially solicit for proposals in the exact same manner that the, uh, the Brunton Architects one was, where it's all combined into one service package. Just due to the fact that the city wouldn't be planning to act as the general contractor and individually solicit for each of those services, um, just on the city staff time, or if you were to hire somebody to act as that, that's essentially what the, the package that we're looking at was going to do. With all that said, going through this process, um, would include doing a few meetings to inform all the bidders as to what is requested or supposed to be included. Essentially, this would be written almost exactly as what the Brunton proposal was written as. So if there's a, an issue with how that one was laid out, I guess that would be something we'd want to fix ahead of time. Going through this process, it's anticipated to add approximately three to four months to the process. Because we, because of the price of the project, or the amount of the estimated fees, we'd want to advertise for at least three weeks, we'd have to bring it to council. On the 15th, to get approved to advertise, so we wouldn't be until the 19th to receive, at which point then, we'd have to elect to be able to proceed, and then, and then they'd be able to start their design. So we'd be looking at a, you know, spring completion at best.
I have a question. A question of Mr. Becker. So, here, did you, were you listening to that? So, does that go with that timeline you were talking about, that maybe we should wait, because we get a better price? You know what I'm talking about?
The, the idea is, is that if you're going to bid for any project, you want to be bidding at the right time of the year. The best time of the year to be bidding for, whether it's a street project or a new liquor store, is to be January, February. The later you wait into the year, you are automatically going to end up paying a premium on that bid, simply so that the contractor can fit you into their schedule. So when they get into that January, February range, they're going to start looking out over the course of the year and planning how they have, they're going to have their crews working, and how are they going to keep them busy throughout that year. As their schedule fails, and you bid later in the year, they're going to say, all right, I can fit that in, but now I need a premium in order to get it to fit in, because I have a risk of liquidated damages on another project.
So essentially, doing it the way the council wanted to do it, we're still hitting that window, correct?
Jason can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we go out for proposals here, I think it's going to be really hard to be done by Thanksgiving.
I have to disagree with that, Mike. First of all, we're not dealing with a contractor, the bids is work in January or February. You go to somebody up to BJ Boss up in Cambridge, he isn't going to do that. You go to somebody up to BJ Boss up in Cambridge, he isn't going to do that. Another contractor I have in mind, saw at Forest Lake, he isn't going to do that. We're not dealing with a contractor that's bidding work out in January for the whole year. We don't have to deal with that contractor. I still disagree with the fact that this guy wants a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars not to exceed. You going to tell me that? He's going to be a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. He's not going to exceed it, but he ain't going to go unless, I don't care. I played this game more than once, I've been doing it for fifty years, and this is a game.
And, and this-
And I disagree with that.
And, and here's, and, and I'm not disagreeing with him, but I'm kind of sitting in between Mr. Cook and, and Councilman Lundin. It's brought me to think that maybe we need a special building project committee. And what I mean by that is, the whole council's going to sit on that board, and potentially, it would be a liquor store, so I'd want the liquor store manager on that board, I'd want Ms. Wood on that board, I'd want Mike Becker on that board. And then we all sit and we try to plan this out, to where we're not getting nickel and dimed as a city, because, no disrespect to you, Mr. Cook, but that's what that looked like, is that contractor was nickeling and diming the city.
Uh, let me just clarify a couple of things, um, I guess, almost to the extreme of what you're saying, this is actually lump sum, so it isn't even not to exceed, it's a fixed amount that they're going in with, so-
Yeah.
Definitely went under run. Secondly, I mean, that process is perfectly reasonable, it's just timeline-wise, you know, now we're really looking at it's a, you know, a year-legged out to go through the process of expectations, what's wanted, you know, and, and go through a, a full process before we're actually trying to lock this in. When we're talking about contractor, this has nothing to do with contractors, this is for the design team to make the design. That's what this proposal's for, it's not the contractor.
On that list, you had an interior designer, what do we need an interior designer for?
We're paying for that, and that, and that thing, he's paying for an interior designer. I, and I, and I look at his number, two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to go to a pitched roof? I'm telling you, the guy's been drinking, he's been drinking too much Kool-Aid, because that's unrealistic, I can take you to a building right now, that's more square footage than that, with a pitched roof, with standing seam metal roof, that is not even close to that. Not even close to that, and I also, pre-stressed stand-up concrete? I wouldn't have that in a shaved bet on an outdoor ice arena, because it is very inefficient, a hundred percent. And before you say anything, while you were still sitting in college, I was working on those things. And this thing, that to me, it's, it's ridiculous, it's ridiculous, that we're not going to have that energy efficiency out of that, I guarantee it. No, I, this, that's why I'm saying, he's, he's asking for things, to me, I wouldn't put in my doghouse. Because I'm telling you, I wouldn't have pre-stressed concrete, stand-up walls, in my, on a doghouse, because there's no insulation value to it. I don't care how much insulation you put on it, six inches of concrete is six inches of concrete, it's cold. I don't care what you do to it, they're core-filled, they're core-filled with styrofoam. You still don't, you still have your webs, that's going to be eight inches thick, there's no insulation value. Now you're trying to insulate the inside of that, stick frame the thing, spray foam it, you're going to have a better building. I guarantee it. And I, that's why I just don't agree with any of this, he's out of line on that roof, I know that for a fact. And I don't agree with having tip-up walls. I, I, it's, it's, sure, it's quick, but it's not going to be longevity of the building to make it efficient for us to, to afford to operate that building. I just, I know these things, I've been doing this my whole life, and that's, I, I, I'm very passionate about what I do. I've been around all of this. You walk into a basement, outs, right, you go outs, in the house, in a house, in the middle of summer, you go in a basement, it's twenty degrees colder, why? Because that concrete is cold. You go into the house, I, I was in a basement today with poured concrete walls, it was warmer outside than it was in a basement, and I had two heaters running in there. That concrete is cold, it absorbs that temperature, and it takes a long time to generate it out. Just like if you put in-floor heating in a concrete slab, it takes weeks to heat it up, it takes weeks for it to cool down. Why is that? Because it takes that long to dissipate and absorb.
And, and I, I don't think anybody on this council would disagree with the fact that we're trying to build a liquor store here that's going to last us a long time. And we want to make sure we're going to get the bang for our buck. And the way that it was presented, Mr. Cook, it, there was a few things that I was pointing out, and of course, he was pointing out even more, and I mean, it, to me, it just looked like it was fumbled. To me, that guy should play for the Minnesota Vikings, because he might have a better chance, but.
But that's going to change in six months.
Right, so it might be a way to see what happens.
We're not, we're not building this until spring, we, we wouldn't be building this till spring, anyway. And I totally agree with the fact that, with what you're saying, if you were dealing with a street maintenance, a company that does all highways and street work, absolutely, jump on it now and get them booked solid. But on this kind of building, what this is, we don't need that, we don't need to have somebody say that we're going to charge you a premium price. I can tell, I'll tell you right now, BJ Boss wouldn't do it, this other contractor's PMI Construction out of Forest Lake, which I'm doing the YMCA work for, they wouldn't do that. I know they wouldn't, I know that for a fact, and I don't even know Brian Boss. But I know people that do work for him, I know they wouldn't do that.
I don't know about the Forest Lake guy, but if you went to anybody locally, they wouldn't do that.
I just, it's not a building that you need to have Soles erection built, or Mortenson built.
We don't need marble floors in there, and, I mean, what do we, that interior designer just blew me out of the water.
I, and we're paying, we're going to pay him a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to put his rubber stamp on it to say he's an architect. And that's what we're doing, we're paying him a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to be, because he's going to, John's going to decide what he wants in that building, what he want, what colors he want, he's going to decide that. Interior designer isn't, he's going to decide that. Ms. Wood's going to decide some other things.
Mr. Becker's going to say what we can afford.
But I mean, it's, that's why I'm just saying, some of these things, we're going to pay this guy a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, rubber stamp, and say he's, because he's an architect?
I mean, yeah, it's not just the architect, this is the entire design team, so it's structural, mechanical, electrical, all the different-
And I, and I can, I'll tell you right now, the same one that did the, did the architectural and mechanical for the YMCA, will do it for a third of that. I know that.
So, so again, that's where the, what I'm trying to say here is, we're not looking to get individual proposals for each of those mechanical, electrical, and have somebody staff-wise act as the project manager.
No, I would not ask that.
So we would need to find a team that's putting together a number, so, again, we're essentially, we're still looking at the same team concept of needing to bring somebody in, not just an architect, but an entire start-to-finish team.
But here's, here's the thing. You have an engineer and architect design that building. Then that building goes out for bid.
Correct.
The general contractor is the project manager.
Correct.
So, we're paying this guy to be the general contractor, and architect, and the engineer?
You don't manage the design of those subs, I guess, that you're kind of referring to when you're saying, a mechanical guy could design that for cheaper, and an electrical guy could design that portion for cheaper, the design stage has to be done as a team.
That is an engineering, that is an engineering and architectural firm that does that.
Correct.
I, I totally understand that, I totally understand that we cannot design-build this. Which ultimately, we will design-build it, because we're going to sit down with the architect and the engineer and say, well, this is what we want.
Correct, so we'll design, bid, build, and that's like the optimal process, and that's what we're trying to bring here.
Yeah, but I-
It just comes down to-
Not with this guy, I don't think so.
Okay, so, if that's the case, that's what this is, there's, you know, the forty-seven hundred and forty dollars to go through this process of my time and city staff time, I guess, in, in addition to that, because there'll be a few meetings. Like we said, it'll add some time, uh, I guess, I don't know what the, the cost impacts are for not opening for six months later than originally intended, but-
It's, it's ideal to be open ahead of Thanksgiving for the, for the, for the busiest part of the year, that's ideal. But from what I'm hearing from the council, my recommendation would be the same as last time, is just, council's got to be comfortable with it. It is much better to go slow and be comfortable with the decisions that you're making, than to feel like you need to hurry.
And I'll get that phone number for that, that firm, I'll get it for you tomorrow, goes in, I'll call you with it.
So, so I just want one input on this thing, I just got, I want you all to understand what this is doing to us right now, okay? So, the day before Thanksgiving, we did as much as New Year's Eve, you know what that's doing to my staff, you know what that does to my store with COVID going on? I've never seen more people in my store on Wednesday than we did this Wednesday. So you need to understand why this little store that I got ain't cutting it. I got people coming to me, arguing with me, that I can't get their beer, why? Because I got no place to put it. I don't have half the damn bourbon that people are asking me for, I can't put it in there, I don't have room. We're, we're barely walking around, I'm worried about my employees in the back room, because it's so tight, that things can fall on them, because I got things stacked all over the place, I can't even put the stuff I have in that store. I need this thing to move, and I need it to move fast, and my customers are asking me for it, that's what I'm asking you.
I totally agree with you, but I am not going to have a store built for five hundred thousand to a million dollars more than it should be, and I don't care.
And I, I understand that, but I, what I'm asking you is, we, we need to get moving, I don't want this thing to stall, we already got the land, it's sitting there, I want to move. I, I want to get my customers happy, I'm going to lose them, I'm losing them already to Cambridge.
What would make you think we're going to stall, John?
Well, I just, I think that if we do stall, that the bids will go up.
How, how long have you worked in this city, John?
I've, I've been here almost ten years, it'll be ten years in March.
In what year did you get your best result in, John?
Well, it has, this COVID year, obviously, this has been our best year.
Under this administration?
Well, it, it has, yes.
Okay, nobody's going to stall on you, we understand the significance of a new liquor store, we get it, John. And we want it more than, if not just as much as the rest of this team. But the point, the fact of the matter is, is exactly what Councilman Lundin said. I, and, and my financial watchdog down here, he'll be the, the second one, and I'm pointing at Councilman Gordon, because he ain't going to pay five hundred thousand or a million dollars for that, it ain't happening.
I have some questions, actually, but-
See?
I mean, how much, I mean, Jason, I mean, you do this for a living, obviously, I mean, and, and Steve, I know you know way more about this than I'll ever, ever know. But, I mean, from your experience, I mean, you work with this company a lot, and I mean, design-build would be the optimum way to go, of course, but we're not allowed to do that, right, so, I mean, is there ways around that, where if we do have a committee, I mean, do we hire a special project manager, that, I mean, can we, can we design-build and then just pay for a stamp on those design-build plans, or, I mean, are, are there ways that we can do that, that maybe we can get by a little bit cheaper and, and do more what you're, you were originally wanting to do, or is that not really an option? And if it's not an option, I mean, this bid for a hundred and ninety-two, I mean, can we kind of go and cut some things out of that, like an interior design? We don't need that, obviously, and, and things that, and I haven't looked through it in a lot of detail here lately, but, uh, but maybe there's things that we can just say, well, we don't want this, we don't want that, so I guess that's kind of a two-part question, but-
Yeah, and specifically, I guess that's where I was thinking of maybe going here, is, I mean, not, not to keep pushing the same company, but, you know, to get the, the scope of what's wanted, you know, from what Councilmember Lundin's saying versus what this firm is kind of proposing. It's more or less, once we try and write the, the request for proposals, we're going to want it to be written in a way that they're all apples to apples. And so at this stage, if we're still discussing wall types and, and roof types and materials, um, I guess, I'm almost thinking, we do bring in this Corey Brunton from Barkin Architects, you know, and maybe have that meeting, where we talk about what specifically is wanted, how we want to do a cost savings, what elements we can remove. And, you know, granted, the interior design is a very clear, easy one to pull out, but, you know, this was the full package, so that there's-
That's not the only one, though.
Right, I'm, and, and that's, that's fine, it's just, this was the full entire package.
That's why I came up with my thought process, was why don't we have like a, and not only with the liquor store, but we're going to need this down the road for somebody else. When, when we do the police department, why don't we have a project building committee? To where this council and, and amenities that are going to be affected are going to sit in that as well, with that architect, and we can do apples to apples.
Right, so, so I guess at this point, it sounds like we're not ready to even go out for RFPs, because the RFP would be written, we need everybody to give us a price to do prefab walls, you know, whatever, so they're all looking at the same building for when we're trying to get a price. If, if we're still trying to negotiate that discussion, I think we work that out before we go out. But I think the clearest way to do that will be to sit on with an architect, and then because Brunton's familiar with everything, and just work out those exact differences in why they say that this is the most cost-effective solution, because they are saying that. And then, that same topic of what things the city doesn't actually want of their services, where we could remove them. And then at that point, either if that number's been revised to a point that's good, well then maybe we can move forward, if it's, the scope has now been defined to a point where we want to go out and ask other architectural firms to give us numbers on that now-defined scope, you know. I think it's kind of one of, I mean, at this point, it doesn't sound like we're ready to go out for the RFP, because they're all going to be proposing their services.
But are we, are we paying that architect upfront?
They haven't been paid anything, uh, they've actually been kind of helping this process along on their own, you know.
So, so that kind of answers that part there, but, so what about, I mean, can we do basically design-build, and we just have the, you know, the subs design, and then go and get an architect to review those plans and just pay for their stamp, no?
So, not in that way.
Who do you think lobbied for that?
That's the state statute, we can't, right?
Correct, yeah, for-
So they have to design and put their stamp on it, they can't put a stamp of, um-
Right, what I was getting at is, whether or not, I mean, I wouldn't recommend it in any way, but if the city assigned a project manager to the team, and then that employee went out and got an architect, and then worked that through, and then went out and got a structural engineer to work with that architect, and then went out and got a mechanical engineer, and then worked with them. And forcing those groups on each other is the only way that you can be that fully in-between the process, and think you're going to save on each individual contract, but whoever's running that is going to be costing more than hiring a team, you know, as a unit, to, to put this together, so.
Well, Councilman Lundin, you said you had someone that would come in at a third of the price, would, would they cover, would they cover all those things that we need to-
Yeah, that's what they do.
Okay.
I, like I said, I'll get the number for Ms. Wood tomorrow, I can't get it tonight, obviously, but I'll get it to her. You can call them, they can give a ballpark idea what they're talking about, and go from that point. I mean, I just, I honestly, I just can't, John, I, I love you to death, I want that liquor store done yesterday, but I'm not going to do it at a cost of a million to five hundred thousand to two million dollars over that, I just, I'm not going to do it, I can't. Because that's going to start pushing money back into, into the, into taxpayers.
And he's kind of pointing, another thing that I was, besides the interior designer, that I keep pointing out, concrete walls? That's going to not going to be efficient for you or your employees and them customers, or the city. Our heat's just going to escape.
Well, I mean, they're not made to just be uninsulated concrete walls, I mean, but a, at the same time, so the, the flip side of this, as you see, professional services don't require the, going out for proposals and getting, you know, bids, like the construction process does require, so, if Councilmember Lundin does have an architectural firm that says, oh, we can build that exactly how you want it, for-
Which I would assume, if she, he gives it to Ms. Wood, and Ms. Wood's going to more likely give it to you anyway, so.
What, I want to hear Jason think.
So what I'm getting at is, if you do have somebody that has this capability, an architectural firm, that can do all the design, manage the team, and have a price that's less, and propose the building in a completely different way, that's cheaper, we aren't obligated to go out for our, proposals. After that, we've now found a, a design firm that, if the city chooses to move forward with them, could.
So basically, we could get an answer right away, I mean, if Steve has, he can call them and say, hey, here's what we got, and we can know probably within a week or so, if, instead of spending a lot of time going out for multiple bids, that, you know, we're not required to do that.
It, it's kind of like, yeah, at this point, I'd say it's kind of like getting a second opinion on what it costs to build this building, because these numbers that are getting thrown out, to me, you know, if anything, we're talking about, if we went out for an RFP with the same wording of what the proposal was, we're going to get prices that are in the same ballpark. And whether or not it's even ten percent less, well, we paid five grand for me and spent twelve, fifteen hours of staff time messing around with it, and we're going to end up with the same end result. And in the end, we just lost six months and we didn't really come out ahead on, on cost. If, if the building design is the thing that's, you know, really the big dollar figure here, um, you know, that's where, yeah, like I say, we're not looking for a contractor right now. We're looking for a firm that's going to do the design work to be able to advertise to a contractor, so.
Well, see, that's, you know, Jason, not, not just selling a broken record, but you, I sit there and look at this. They want a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to do that. Plus, he's proposing he wants to do a pre, pre-cast concrete walls, bar joists, and flat roof decking, which both of those I definitely do not want to see in this building. You know, this isn't a flat deck roof. It's a metal roof. You know, it, you know, it's just, I just.
I would like to mention, well, Council, um, Councilmember Lundin, I wouldn't give the architectural firm too much static on the pre-cast walls. They did ask if the city would be in favor of that, and I said I, yes, because I had not heard when we had those pre-meetings that we would be against it, like we would the flat roof. So that can be on me. I'll take on that.
No, it doesn't matter. It's still.
We're talking about timeframes and materials and lack thereof of materials out there, and I, my knowledge is that when they're insulated correctly, they can be just as good, but we can move that building along faster than having to wait for materials that aren't available, and it is a lot less expensive.
Every spring, they have problems getting concrete up the river. So that's going to be a delay. Every spring. Because the potash can't get up here, because they can't get it up the rivers. So, so concrete, concrete's going to be concrete. It's going to cost any of that delay. Right now, the problem with construction materials right now has been the COVID problem. I don't care what it is. COVID is the problem, because the factories and manufacturers cannot be operating in the safe social distancing to get it done. That's all there is to it. Right now, I was told at eight, bath bays made by Acres, who sells, Bernard sells a million and a half of them, and plus the wholesalers we deal with are nationwide, are four to six weeks out. Because they can't make them, because they can't practice social distancing. It isn't a lack of material, it's a lack of being able to do the work. So in our six-to-eight-week window of our miraculous virus protection, whatever this crap that they're coming up with now comes out, which they already say that's going to be released in three to six weeks, everything will be fine. Really? So let's, let's be realistic. I don't care what we do. This is all going to be a delay on any material products right off the bat. I'm going to tell you that right now. Until COVID is resolved and they allow businesses to go back and operate, it's going to be a shortage. I don't care when we build it. If we started it today, we're still going to be held up on the material. So the delay is not because that we are going to do this right and efficiently and cost-wise. The delay is going to be on our materials. I don't care what anybody says. It's, that is what's going to happen. I live it every day, and I know this every day. So I'm not against this guy coming in and doing this, but I'm going to tell you, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is out of line. Okay, the pre-cast concrete walls, we can sit down and talk about it, but I think that a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is out of line for this. Totally. A hundred percent. And I think it can be done cheaper, and I think we can build this building to what John needs. It's going to function the way John wants it, and it's going to give us longevity down the long run.
I intend to have John retire in this city, so I want to give him a building that he's not ever going to want to leave. I mean, I'm not against putting a bedroom upstairs for him just so he stays there that long, but I want to make sure we do it cost-efficiently.
And, and I understand, and I, I agree with Steve one hundred percent. Um, I was looking to get my roof done, and the price of plywood was three times as much. So, and because there's a shortage, so I understand that. And I think, just like Josie said, we were looking at this like this was something that they could build quick and put together. It may not be the best efficient, may not be the right approach. I just don't want us to keep lagging and not move forward. We want to move forward. That's all I want.
And, and I want to move forward too. And I, and, and I have mentioned this to Mayor Johnson, that I myself would like to sit on a committee, and I don't need to get paid to do this. I want to make sure that we're doing this right. And I've been doing this my whole life, and I'm going to tell you, and, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but I can sit down in two hours and draw the mechanical drawings for that thing and submit them to the state, and when the state would have accepted. The only thing is, I don't have an engineer stamp behind my name. But as plumbing on there, I am just as well as doing that as an engineer. I have submitted hundreds of these plans, and they accept them. So I don't, you don't need somebody with an engineer stamp to engineer the plumbing. You only need an engineer stamp to engineer the building structurally. The rest of it, you don't need an engineer stamp for. Plain and simple.
I'd like to see a lot of local businesses be used in it.
And we've, Ms. Wood and I have already had that conversation. We can't do that.
Really?
We can't.
When you go for bids, when you go for bids for contracting for the services of builder, uh, you do take the lowest bid as bid law. You can't give preference to, even if they're, if they're, now, if they're lower and they're local, then yes. But if they are, say, ten percent higher than the lowest bidder, and we want to go with them because they're local, that's not permitted.
What if it's, what if they got better quality? I mean, who decides that?
Don't matter.
Well, but, but who decides that? That's, that's ridiculous.
State statute.
Well, statute, I don't care about that. It's, I mean, I get it. We have to obey that, but that doesn't make any sense.
And this has been brought up to the city attorney, and she, and he responded to her because of Ms. Wood. I was on the phone with her as she was sending him the email. And it's, and I, I totally, you, but you have to remember, this is government work. And it's not the same as a private party doing something. Anytime you're involved with government, you have to go by government guidelines and statutes.
I think she's just saying that we, we can't pick somebody because they're local.
Is that true, Commissioner?
We can pick who we want, I mean.
But it's, if there's a quality issue, and how are you going to prove that any different with anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, and so, well, sometimes it's just a belief. I mean, I mean, we do write in every one of our contracts when we do these publicly bid things that maybe they have to submit their previous five projects that are very comparable. And if we find they're not, or they don't have enough experience, or, you know, there's, there are things that you can list in your contract that say, oh, we're going to throw you out because you didn't have enough experience, or you didn't meet some of the criteria we're looking for on a construction standpoint, but you can't base it on location or, you know, things like that.
But if, but if it was a local plumber or a local electrician or lighting guy, and they came in at the lowest bid.
So again, when we're bidding is the entire project. And so the contractor that would be bidding it would be for the general to cover the full construction of the entire thing. We're not going to individually bid each subcontractor that's going to come out to the site. So whoever that general contractor chooses to use, again, we have the right to review that sub they bring in and say, nope, that one's not going to do it, but when they bid their package, they're the ones bringing in every sub that they feel they need for their team to construct it.
And chances are, we're not going to know if that sub is, unless they've had, been bad somewhere else. Word of mouth. We'd never know that otherwise. So I, it's, I don't want to delay John on this anymore, but I just don't want to see us spending a million dollars more than we need to.
I concur.
I don't think anybody wants to delay John. I agree with that, you know.
Nor do I think any of us want to spend more money than we should, so.
Exactly.
So what do we want to do? Do you, you want to, you want to put it out for bids, or you want, you think you have somebody that we want to just contact?
Yeah, do we need this RFP if, if we're going to go your route or, or go?
At this point, I don't think it's, it's pertinent to do the RFP right now.
I don't think so either.
Either we get a second opinion on the entire process, on type of construction, what their estimate is on that project, on how to build it for whatever their estimated price would be to build it, and what their fees would be. If there's somebody else that we want to get a number from, then we can at least see, they say, oh, that building, they could build the building for a million less dollar, or, you know, their estimated construction project cost would be a million less dollars, well, that's fantastic, and, you know, I, I don't know who this firm is or whatever, but, you know, and then if their fees are, you know, whatever they may be, you know, we'd be able to move forward if that is actually, you know, a, a company that.
Then I, I guess my recommendation is we would just ex-nay this RFP and look for our second opinion and, and let's move in a timely fashion, uh, to all entities involved.
Right, so, so once we get that, you know, we can more or less set up the same meeting that we had with Brunton on, here's what the city is looking for, um, and then ask them for those numbers, and, uh.
Do you have that information, Ms. Wood? That he's referring to? That the information that they gave you, that Grundy?
Brunton, yes.
Yeah, Brunton?
Yes, if you have that.
All right, I will get you that number tomorrow.
Perfect.
And I guess we'll just go from there. I mean, yes, comparing apple to apple. Let's start that, and then we got to go back to the fact and how we're going to go.
Let's ex-nay that RFP then, Jason, and we'll just do the apples to apples, and we'll come back, and is that good? Good? Councilman Collison, you okay with that?
Sounds good to me.
Awesome. Let's move on to, oop, we don't need that last one, do we?
Correct, Eric, you would, if you could, we'll do a motion to remove items K-11 and K-12.
Motion to remove K-11 and K-12.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to remove K-11 and K-12 from the agenda. And a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Let's move on to K-13, the Development Agreement Amendment for Legacy Pines. Ms. Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the developer has requested that we reduce the letter of credit for Legacy Pines Development. When we do that, the city engineer reviews the request, and then we bring any of the reductions to the council. Uh, in the developers' agreement, we do have a clause that says we need to keep a hundred and twenty-five percent of the engineer's estimate until the project is complete. However, we can reduce upon request, and we also need to keep twenty percent. That's as far down as we can reduce it until it's complete. The, the, um, the developer has requested, you can look, there's a table in your packet, um, to reduce lower than what is allowed in the developers' agreement. Um, lower than the hundred and twenty-five percent, and in some cases, lower than the twenty percent. Uh, so in order to do that, we need to amend the developers' agreement. Um, I've consulted with the city engineer and, um, our staff here, our development team, and we do not recommend doing that. Um, we haven't done that before in the past. It's a bad precedent to set. It does hold the city at liability. The reason we keep a hundred and twenty-five percent of the improvements that are left to do is, um, because if they don't do them, then we have to have the money in order to finish the project.
I thought we did something for him already once.
Yes, uh, for the third edition, we did split his letter of credit. Normally, we do it all at once. He asked us to split the letter of credit up, um, based on, um, the items. Um, do you recall what?
Yeah, we, we just split, uh, Phase Three into utilities so that he only had to put up the hundred and twenty-five percent of the utility cost until the utilities were completed. And then he had to put up the hundred and twenty-five percent of the street cost to do the street portion. But that was already an amendment to the original development agreement, because it was supposed to be one full project. But we did try and, you know, essentially help the process along by letting him divide that letter of credit in half to, to be able to do the one stage of work before the next stage started. And that all worked fine. The rolling them over worked fine. Everything's been covered the entire time. Where we're at right now is just that there's still items left to be constructed. So all those items we're recommending still are the hundred and twenty-five percent to be constructed number, which would be what we originally had for everything always. Um, and then the way the development agreement's written is of the things that are completed, but we haven't accepted the project, we're supposed to hold twenty percent of those costs, uh, until everything's in and completed, just so that, you know, has a incentive to get every little piece of the work done and approved, as opposed to kind of just letting it drag out.
Did he not stand here physically and tell us?
No, he can't. We're close to the public. He's, he's on Zoom right now, but if I may add, just for a balance, uh, what, what with the engineer's recommendation and what we've already accepted, um, the balance would be three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents. That's what we're recommending to keep, and the developer's asking us to reduce it to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so he, um, he is on Zoom, um, and is attending this meeting.
Is it Bob?
It's Bob. Bob, would you like to speak on behalf of this, sir?
Well, what I talked to Sheila about, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
What I talked to Sheila about was, I mean, I get all this. I mean, I understand the development agreement. I understand why the cities do it, you know, I get all that. But, you know, I'm not going to sit here and debate Jason on what's left and all this stuff, but when there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work left to do, and you guys want to hold four hundred thousand for the next six months, I'm just asking for reasonableness. I've done what I've said. I mean, I think, and you know, the season's short. I didn't have time to sit here and debate with the city attorney about how we're going to draw this thing up, and, you know, I'm just asking for the city to consider reasonableness in this instance, because I'm not asking for anything special, I don't think.
Ms. Selman, I heard you say something about what the staff recommended. Did you say you don't recommend this?
Um, I do not. This, we've entered, these are our standard developers' agreements. Um, you know, the developer does read them, um, does sign them. I mean, if they don't have time to sign them, that's on that, or to read them, that's on them. Um, it is standard practice. Remember what happened in two thousand and eight? There was a lot of developments that went through, put in half the utilities, and they just sat there with half the street in. I'm not saying that this is something that Bob's going to do, but this is our protection, and that's why we have it set up this way.
The city's actually had that happen.
I, you know what, and I understand all that. I really do. But I think these things are rote for people that don't do what they say and get the job done. And I mean, you can, if you think I've not done what I said, I mean, we can have that discussion, but I mean, I think we've done what we've said. We've done it on a timely basis, and I just think there should be consideration for this.
Any question or comment by the council?
I mean, Jason, I mean, he says a hundred and fifty thousand's left to do. I mean, your, your estimates must be higher than that, obviously, huh?
No, that's actually the number that we had, um, or that I had from, what we did was take his actual contractor's bid pricing for the items that are left, so it's literally the dollars that he has to pay to his contractor. But that's the, that's the hundred and fifty that he has to pay. Then we have it as, we need to hold a hundred and twenty-five percent of that
Right.
to cover engineering fee, you know, the, like, bidding it for, if the city should have to take it over and manage to finish the work. So that's where that number now inflates to almost two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the rest of the work, uh, second edition and Phase One and Two, of all the work that's complete, um, that's where this topic of twenty percent of all of that work, because it's not finalized and it's signed off on, yes, they've completed every task, we're supposed to hold twenty percent of that entire project cost, and each of those phases, ballpark-wise, are like four hundred thousand dollars, so, you know, that twenty percent times three different things, you know, is the other.
So it's the hundred and twenty-five of what's left to be done, and then it's the twenty percent of the stuff that's not signed off on yet.
Correct.
But the stuff that's not signed off on yet is done?
Correct. And so, yes, that's exactly it. Like, it's in, it's just the project isn't closed out. And so the way it's written is, you know, close it out, every little item, grass is established, we have record drawings, you know, every little thing's done.
Okay.
Then it moves into warranty, at which point we're still supposed to hold ten percent. And so in the end, even after everything's approved, we're supposed to hold ten percent of all these project costs for a two-year period, I believe. And so, you know, ten percent of all these is still going. And so, you know, 10% of all these is still going to be, you know, getting really close to what he's requesting for, to reduce to right now, even though there's still the $150,000 worth of work in itself left to even just specifically be constructed.
I mean, it's not like I'm sticking the city with a project that's not done.
No, but the city's been stuck before, way before our time, but.
But I mean, the, the deal is, I mean, I just feel like these things are, I get this, I'm not arguing with why they're done. I mean, we've all been through it. These things are rote to protect the city. If there's a bad developer, things don't go the way they're supposed to. I performed. I'm asking for the consideration.
So I mean, what's, what's holding us up from being able to approve that 20%? I mean, just time of the year, it maybe has something to do with it. It sounds like you said grass has to be established. I mean, obviously, those things aren't going to be done until spring, right? So.
Right, there was some turf establishment, some striping, and, you know, just, and I know, Jason, you're upset with those guys, they didn't do it. But, you know, I, it's like running kinder care, but, you know, it'll get done. They just didn't do those minor items. And the wear course and the sidewalk out there are the two biggest things. And I mean, those will get done in the spring.
So I mean, could we?
We still got the last phase to go. I mean, we're not going anywhere.
Could we drop those things that are done, just need the final stamp of approval, down to that 10% now? And then keep that 150 plus the, the, you know, 125% of that 150 where it is? And, I mean, what would that get us to? I think then we're still.
We're still close to being ready.
Covering our stuff and we're, we're helping Bob out a little bit and, and we're still making sure that our, our butts are covered. I mean.
So, you know, that's.
Then we're setting a precedent, so that's not.
Well, I mean.
He's done a lot of good work in the city.
The next contractor could come in and do the same amount, and then we're going to start bending rules for that one too, because we bend them for this gentleman.
So Jason, is he correct in everything he's saying? You've inspected his work and he's correct?
Yeah, yeah, for, for that, not, for the things that are installed, I would say 90% of those things are signed off on and accepted. You know, the sewer, all the utilities have all passed every test, so they're signed off on and good. And so, you know, those literally are, have passed their final inspections. It's just, again, the way the DA has written that it's not closed out, so we're not supposed to move into warranty period amounts. So on that note, if you should choose to, I believe you'd still need to do a development agreement amendment. But going to a 10% on those items that have been accepted, you know, it doesn't sound completely unreasonable, you know, in this situation. We still, I don't have what the second edition's total project cost is, but for third edition, just looking at, if you look on my, my memo, I did break down how much was the 125% remaining versus the how much was being held for the 20% of completed work. So if you look at that 20% of completed work on Phase One, Phase Two Utilities and Phase Two Street, and then took only half of those three, you know, we'd only be looking at, lowering it another, another 65 grand-ish for, for third edition. I don't have second edition's amount, but let's assume it's somewhere in the 40 grand. So, you know, if you chose to go that way, you might be able to get it down, you know, another $100,000 or so.
What do you think of all that new information, Ms. Selman? I mean, maybe it's not new to you, but when we talk about negotiating, what do you think?
Well, first and foremost, when we started with the development, we did negotiate a development agreement. So we have it for Phase One, we have it for Phase Two, we have Phase Three broken out into three phases. We did decipher, you know, split up the letter of credit. So it's up, it's really up to the council on what you want to do. Going down to 10%, I wouldn't recommend that. 20, maybe, 100%, maybe, but it's all the liability that you want to take on. It's up to you. I, I don't doubt that Bob's going to do what he says he's going to do, but we don't know that. That's what we have a guarantee.
And there's that word I don't like, liability.
So it's completely up to the council. I, I would not recommend going to the 10%. The 10% is in the warranty phase. They're not done. So the 20% is what we allow when you're done and we accept it, and we keep the 20% of what's remaining. Well, really, it's 125%, but we, we can do the 20% if you want to reduce instead of 125%. Want to go to 100% what's remaining, 75, you know, it's up to the council. But again, we did enter into agreement. It was signed. It was very clear in the exhibit on what the requirements are going to be. This isn't new. So again, the liability, it depends on how much liability the city wants to take on.
I understand all that, Sheila, but I guess what I'm asking for is, you know, a little bit of consideration for what I believe is success. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, I, I mean, Mr. Mayor, you said, you know, you don't want to set a bad precedent. Well, I'm not asking for that. I mean, I'm, I'm asking that the city entertains something for performance. What's wrong with that?
That's exactly what this is going to do though, Bob. We're going to send a, set a bad precedence for the next contractor that comes in. And, I mean, I, I'm not going to sugarcoat anything. They want to play the game. And we're going to end up playing this game all over again, because hey, you let, you let Bob do it, why can't you let me?
You know, you guys got 400 grand that's going to sit there now for six months. I mean, you guys got to run a city, I got to run a business. I mean, that's nothing more than dead capital to me.
The city potentially is a business, Bob.
I, I know you run a business. I get that, but I'm asking for a little bit of consideration because I think you're, you're holding twice more than you need. And I'm not asking to expose you in any way. There's more than enough there to finish the work needed to be done.
The only reason I would be willing to think about giving him a little bit more grace is because he did mention COVID. And we just talked about how material is hard to get during COVID. And, and also during COVID, well, I'm sick of COVID too, but, and it's also hard to get, you know, labor and, you know. So I'm not saying let's do it. I'm just saying I think it should be considered in this.
I guess what would matter to me is I would lean on my staff. And I would say, what does my staff recommend? And I'd not only go to Ms. Selman, but I'd go to Mr. Cook, and I'd say, what, and you know what, I'd even look at Mr. Becker. And say, hey, you're, you're the money guy, you're the engineer, and you're the economic community development director, so what do you guys think should happen? What is your recommendation to this council?
So like I said, we entered into an agreement. My recommendation is to keep with our agreement. If you want to, if you do want to concede a little bit, I would not recommend going down to 20%. I could see reducing it because we are in winter months. He has performed well. But I, I'm just not comfortable with it, and we did enter into the agreement that he did sign.
And you said liability, and I don't like that word.
And we would have to amend the agreement, so we'd have the city attorney look at it, you know, the same process that we go for, for other amendments. But, you know, I wouldn't be comfortable reducing it any more than, than the 80%.
Mr. Cook?
That's just my thought.
I, I mean, for the numbers wise, like we say, holding the 125% of what work is remaining is absolutely just standard practice. Definitely should do it. For those items that are left, you know, the accepted past work, the utilities and things, you know, if you wanted to go through the amendment process and that, and acknowledge that it doesn't have to be the entire project moving into the warranty period, and you wanted to go to 10% on the things that have already passed acceptance, you know, that, that's your call. But, you know. That's all I got.
Mr. Becker.
I don't really have a horse in this race, but what I would say is, I, I'm kind of in line with Jason. That, I, I think in the end here, has, we seem to have a debate among the council here about whether or not we should work, whether or not there's a precedent, and then what would be the standard for any future precedent, right? I, I think that if we're going to make any change to the, to the development agreement, maybe instead of holding the 20%, go down to 10 or so, some kind of concession for Bob. I think you have to be able to understand today and then clearly articulate in the future that the reason this happened was because we, we strongly considered his past performance. Like, that needs to be the thing that you're understanding if you go that route. Because if you can't clearly articulate why there would be an adjustment to the development agreement, then yeah, you do end up in a problem in the future. But so long as the council can understand that this is why we're doing it, and this would be the standard that would, you know, give an opportunity to a future developer. Because another developer comes in, we've never worked with them before, they want to put up 68 homes, and they have no track record. No, I don't think we should amend any development agreement for them. They have no track record. But I, I can't say that Bob's done, done bad. I mean, I can't. And, and to the extent that he and I have worked together on the things that are finance-related, yeah, he's responsive and I've, I've enjoyed working with him. Just how it is.
Now I'd lean back on the council.
I mean, I think, I think that's fair. I mean, that's kind of meeting them halfway in the middle of what he's, what he's asking for. And it still covers everything that, that we need to cover, so that we're not left, you know, with issues if something were to happen. So I mean, I, I think if we were to take the things that are held at the 20% right now and knock that down to 10, and then keep the other 150 at the 125 like we normally do, which you said, that's probably about $100,000 savings roughly for, for Bob that he can get back and, and, you know, put to use. So, and it still covers our, our liability. I think that's, that's what I'd like to see.
Is that acceptable to Bob?
I guess, it's kind of late. I need someone on all these 10 and 25 and all that. Can someone just, I look at the unnumbered. Can you just tell me what that would be, Jason?
I, I guess I don't have the Phase Two project costs or the specific items that we're talking about being accepted. But it, it really would be, you know, about the $100,000 off. So, you know, we're looking at around $300,000 being held, where we'd be releasing around $500,000.
Okay, so that's, so we're kind of in the middle then. I wanted two, you wanted four, we settle at three?
More or less.
I can live with that.
I'll put that in a motion then, if everybody else is, oh, did you put it in a motion?
I didn't put it in a motion, but I, I can second your motion there, Paul.
Okay. I motion with Jason, $300,000.
I have a motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Burgley. We're releasing 300?
Well, we retain 300,000, we'd actually be releasing 500,000. And those are rough numbers unless you want to make them fixed numbers. I can actually go through and, and get the actual fixed amount, but.
If we, if we can just have the council delineate the method of calculation, then we can just run the numbers.
I think we should wait and run the numbers.
And just, if the council wants to say, instead of holding 20, we're going to, 20%, we're just hold 10%, and whatever the calculation is, that is it, that, that's sufficient. If we try to pick the numbers, that's not going to help me.
Councilman Collison, do you have something to say?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's talking to my dog.
All righty then.
I put in the motion that we, how did that go?
Postpone. No?
I think that we should make the recommendation on what you want to do. Jason, run the numbers, and that is what we will inform.
That was my motion going to be.
Yeah, so.
Oh, and how, one other thing, how much does it cost us to do that amendment then?
Actually, that comes out of Bob's escrow.
Okay, all right.
So, so I guess what I'm hearing and what I think I'm recommending is we drop to 10% on the accepted finished work. Still stay at 20% on things that maybe are installed but aren't accepted, such as, you know, turf establishment and things like that. And then hold the 125% on anything not completed.
Correct.
All right, I'll motion that. Thank you for making a.
I'll second that.
Geez, that's a lot to go through. So.
But he's got to go through it on a daily basis anyway.
Yeah, so.
For me?
Yeah, I, I'm lost here in what we're motioning for and what we're saying.
He's motioning, he's going to take and tally the final numbers. He's going to drop it from 20% to 10% and keep that 125% where it's at.
Yep. And then we'll bring a new number with the development agreement amendment to the next council meeting.
So you're saying basically we're giving him back about $100,000, or instead of holding $400,000, we're holding $300,000, right?
Ballpark-wise.
Yeah, ballpark.
Okay, well, I'm glad that's all on record now. So I have a motion from Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Do I have approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept the consent agenda by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carries five zero. Nope, we have the city administrator performance review. This will be in closed session, so I have to have, ask everybody to exit the room, please.
And we will be exiting the Zoom meeting, coming out of closed session.
Except for Dan.
You got to keep Dan in.
Dan's going to come back to another one.
Okay.
So following the closed session, we will be, the council will be adjourning. The summary of that will be on the next council meeting. I will be exiting out of this Zoom now. Dan, you can click on that next link that says closed session, please. Do you want to take a four-minute break?
Yes.